I bring this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session, closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
We're now moving into item 3.1, Public. This is the public hearing on the capital improvement plan. I don't believe we have any speaker cards, but I wanted to give folks, the audience, an opportunity to complete a speaker card quickly if you're here to speak specifically to the capital improvement plan. Seeing none and hearing none, we're moving out of the public hearing and into the regular meeting, which we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I believe Mr. Miller Ewing, who's an eighth grader from James Blair, is going to lead us in the pledge. So he may begin.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Robinson, would you call the roll, please?
Or Ms. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Item 4.3, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 5.1, Announcements and Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is American Education Week, a week sponsored by the National Education Association to recognize the outstanding men and women who serve and support children through public education. In WJCC schools, we are using this as an opportunity to kick off our employee appreciation campaign. Every day this week, the senior leadership team will visit schools to say thank you to our incredible teachers, support staff, and administrators. Ms. Ombi is also joining us as a representative for the school board, and Ms. Young visited DJ Montague this week as well. With the support of Town Bank and other area businesses, we have raffle items for a deserving employee at each school. Through a random number generator, we selected staff members to receive donated gift certificates to local restaurants, gyms, area activities, and so on. You can see photos from our school visits on social media. We are also posting profiles and stories featuring some of our extraordinarily talented employees online, so be sure to check out the website, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram pages. And while you were visiting our website, you may wish to register for two upcoming Parent Academy events. The Parent Academy is a division-wide initiative which offers resources and strategies for families on a variety of topics. Tomorrow evening's session focuses on vaping. WJCC staff is teaming up with Police, Bacon Street, and EVMS to share information about vaping trends, the dangers of vaping, and look for it for parents who think their children may be vaping. This Parent Academy event is scheduled for tomorrow evening, beginning at 6:00 PM, at Blair Middle School. As a reminder, the Parent Academy is free for all families. A second Parent Academy addressing mindfulness will take place Wednesday, December 4th, at 6:00 PM. Mindfulness is a strategy used to help children focus and reduce worry. It can also improve their cognitive outcomes, such as social skills and emotional regulation. Participants in the Parent Academy will learn evidence-based approaches to reducing anxiety. Parents, guardians, and staff members can register for either or both of the upcoming Parent Academy events online at wjccschools.org. Finally, this evening, I would like to highlight one of the many ways that the Student Health Initiative Program, known as SHIP, helps our students develop healthy lifestyles. At schools across the division, students are taking part in challenge clubs. These are after-school clubs that challenge young people to develop lifelong skills and habits to support a healthy lifestyle. Clubs include cooking, gardening, running, team sports, adaptive dance, martial arts, ballet, jazz, hip-hop, yoga, and much more. Students in grades three through 12 meet once a week for lessons taught by WJC school staff and community partners. Students also participate in culminating events such as performances, or the Sleigh Bell 5K, and the dog race. In fact, the Sleigh Bell 5K is coming up on Saturday, December 14th. Many thanks to SHIP, the Williamsburg Health Foundation, and our community partners for creating these wonderful enrichment opportunities for our students. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I know some school board members have announcements as well. I'll start with Ms. Cook, and then just we'll go down the line here.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two announcements. One is about the school liaison committee, the other is about the Special Education Advisory Committee. The Special Education Advisory Committee met on the evening of November 14th, and they had a guest speaker named Jenna White from Fairfax County who spoke about bringing trauma to school, awareness, action, and advocacy, and that was a very informative presentation about the needs of children who have experienced trauma. And in addition to that, they talked about different ways to highlight the work of special education teachers in our community, embed that into our existing recognition efforts. So, and then moving on to the school liaison committee, which met November 13th, we reviewed, Dr. Heron and Ms. Ombi reviewed the capital improvement plan with Ms. Ewing's help to present that which had already been presented to the board, and prepared for our joint meeting, which is coming up Tuesday, December 3rd. We talked about communicating with the community at large together about the need for our 10th elementary school, and that work, we hope, will take place in earnest once we get through the CIP process, and then also communicating jointly with state legislators so that we can advocate together for more funding for education.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Were there additional announcements or reports? Board members?
Yes, I attended the November 13th CTE meeting, and one of the things that happened at that meeting is we chose a chair and talked about future meetings, and we spent a good deal of time talking about the Carl Perkins grant that is going to come up, and the requirements that are going to be needed to make sure that we receive those funds. We also talked about future meetings, so.
Thank you, Ms. Young. And I attended on November 13th. I filled in for Ms. Young and also Ms. Taylor's student advisory committee, and I'm just always so impressed with our students who choose to serve in that capacity. And so one of the topics that we asked the students to share their insights on was student vaping and what that looks like in our school system, and what are students' thoughts on that, and they had some ideas for ways to possibly curtail that and encourage students to not vape. But again, was just impressed with their expertise, and they're willing to share candidly what it looks like in our schools on a daily basis. They also talked about the calendar and the impact of starting before Labor Day, and getting their feedback on that was interesting. Most of the students were all for it, as long as we ended earlier than mid-June. And then we asked them for some more ideas for them to share and study throughout the year, and one of those was equity in funding and looking at how the division distributes money for athletics. So that's something that we're going to be looking at and getting some more feedback from students. I appreciate the opportunity to fill in, so thank you so much for that. So moving on to item 6.1, the recognitions for students and staff.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have two groups of students to recognize tonight. Let's begin by honoring Jamestown Gulf Team. For the second consecutive year, the team has been named VHSL Class Four Champions. Scoring three under par with a combined score of 285, the team won the victory at Williamsburg National Golf Course, their home course. This is the team's seventh victory in 20 years. Students, as your name is called, please join us up front to be recognized and remain up front for a group photograph. Casey Bennett. Adam Carlson. Fletcher Hisman. John DeVore, first team and all-region and all-state. Mason Eggleson, first team, all-region. And Faith Sullivan. And if Coach Meredith and if the athletic director, Kenneth Edwards, principal, want to join us at the front this evening for the photograph, that'd be wonderful. Well done. Next, we want to recognize the Lafayette Rams Theater students for their first place in the Virginia Theater Association Competition. For this win, the students competed against over 2,000 students representing 48 Virginia schools to advance to the Southeast Theater Conference in February. In addition, the team recently became the VHSL Region Three Champions and will compete in the Virginia High School League State Competition in December. Students, come up as your name is called and remain up front for a group photograph. And Micah Wills. And if Suzanne McCory and the principal are in the audience this morning or this afternoon, please join us up front. Those were all of the recognitions for this evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Okay. Okay, moving on to item 6.2, our school spotlight. Tonight, we're featuring James Blair Middle School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, the school spotlight shines on the spiders of James Blair Middle School and their efforts to fully engage the school's English language learners and their families in the school community. Mrs. Haskins, principal of James Blair, joins us tonight with members of her team to show us how they are catching L families in the spider's web. Welcome, Ms. Haskins.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Haskins, and greetings to our school board, to our superintendent, to our central office representatives, and I am the proud principal of James Blair Middle School. I'm here tonight to let you know about a program, but before I start talking about the program, I am also the proud principal of that wonderful young man right there, Mr. Ewing Miller, who did the Pledge of Allegiance. You have some kids that make you feel just as special as you're supposed to make them feel. He's one of those kids. So thank you so much, honey. But yes, I am the proud principal, and I'm here tonight to talk about an event that we had that had such a positive impact on our school. It was a very intentional effort made by specific people for a specific population at James Blair. I would like to present a brief video highlighting the event that happened on October 16th, and afterwards, you will hear from Ms. Ashley Miller, who's a teacher at James Blair, for final remarks.
At James Blair Middle School, we believe that there is power in our web. We believe that by providing quality instruction, student engagement, and positive relationships, we can meet the needs of all of our students. In order to meet the needs of each student at James Blair Middle School, we have to implement equitable practices. On October 16th of 2019, we see an example of one of these equitable practices. We had a community meeting for all of the families at James Blair Middle School where English is a second language. I would like to introduce you to Mrs. Ashley Miller, English as Second Language teacher at James Blair Middle School, and Mr. Jorge Rivas, who is a translator for WJC Schools and a well-known advocate in the Hispanic community. These two, in collaboration with the College of William &amp; Mary, created a night for our families to come to James Blair Middle School and have questions answered, and we had an intentional effort to build relationships with our families. Families who attended the community night received support in the following areas. They were able to review their student's Limited English instructional plan, navigate parent view, learn information about attendance to the school calendar, and pass the educational learning acronym, and we just tried to provide a space where any questions received answers. If you haven't seen the movie Coco, it was a huge hit. The younger siblings of our students watched Coco, and they were also able to participate in arts and crafts that were led by students from William &amp; Mary. The students shown in this picture all come from the same family. They are in the elementary, middle, and high school levels within WJCC. One of the great things about the community night is that it just wasn't for students at James Blair Middle School, but the information provided could be beneficial to students in the high school level and students at the elementary level. The support we received from Williamsburg James City County Public School Central Office Representatives, the College of William &amp; Mary, and the James Blair Middle School faculty and staff made this night a success. We are truly thankful for the continuing efforts of all of these stakeholders. In order to build positive relationships and increase student engagement with each child at James Blair Middle School, we believe that it takes an intentional effort, and we are so thankful for this opportunity to share our community night with the WJCC
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Miller, and in addition to the video, I'd like to share with the board the origin and scope of the community night. This community night is not something new to our division. Other ESL teachers have been conducting these meetings throughout the years in many different platforms. The overall focus of these meetings has always been to educate parents and guardians on the language plan itself, to break down the how and the whys as to their student being entered into our language program, and to explain the students' educational rights in terms of accommodations and modifications they are entitled to. I conducted a similar-style meeting last year where I took the meeting to the physical community of our L families, but it was on a much smaller scale. I actually started planning for this year's community night as last year's meeting was taking place. Reflecting upon my experiences and interactions with our family members, I realized that we had to begin to bridge the divide between school and home for our 63 English language learners. I worked very closely with our interpreter, Mr. George Rivas, who has great ties and relationships with our Latino and Hispanic community, about what to include and touch upon for this year's meeting. My meeting would definitely not have been as successful without the help and collaboration of Mr. Rivas. We expanded the focus this year to educating our families on parent view. Mr. Rivas and I had noticed the need to inform our families on how to begin to help their students at home with their schooling. We had central office personnel present to create accounts, and then we downloaded the Parent View app onto their mobile devices, and then families were shown how the app operates. This element of the meeting has had a huge, successful impact on our students' progress because parents and guardians now have the knowledge and access to locate helpful information for their students. Another important person who I reached out to was William &amp; Mary professor, Ms. Jennifer Bicamendes. I had worked with Ms. Mendes last spring, and after mentioning my needs, she was able to recruit about 15 William &amp; Mary speakers, or students, who are fluent Spanish speakers to assist with all elements of the meeting. Ms. Mendes and her students were also an important element to the meeting's success. We also had our administrators, many content teachers, and our school counselors present. They had the opportunity to meet and speak with our families and begin to build positive relationships between home and school. My goal was, and always will be, to build a sense of community, acceptance, and to show these families that they are a vital asset to our school. By getting our families into our building, they were able to feel the love, support, and devotion we have for their students. We at James Blair believe in our Ls and see the excellence and wealth in which they bring to our overall school community. We have also developed a Latino/Hispanic girl support group, as well as weekly reading sessions with a therapy dog. Whether it be reading aloud or practicing their English with our four-legged friend Cody, the students are gaining confidence, a boost in self-esteem, and discovering their identity in a new country. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak tonight. I hope I have shone a light upon the awesomeness of our school and the amazing things that we are doing for our English learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from members? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you very much. Oh. It's good to see you, Ms. Haskins.
Thank you. It's good to see you too, Ms. Cook.
I just wanted to thank you for coming to share this with us, and it's wonderful to hear from Ms. Miller and to see Mr. Rivas again, and to have him be part of WJCC in this effort at James Blair. I guess I have a couple questions. Of the 63 Ls that you have at Blair, do you have a sense of how many were able to make it, and sometimes transportation can be a barrier, or working families?
Tell me if I'm correct, but out of the 62 families, we had 60 that were present. Am I correct?
So, wow.
But I will say that Mr. Rivas called parents. But I will say that Mr. Rivas called parents. He called each family individually, and he told me that once they gave him the "okay, we will be there," they were there.
He's magic that way, huh?
He is absolute, yes. Yes, he is magical.
Yeah. And then, is that, can that be Spanish? I mean, I know the content isn't, but the directional sections, is that only in English or is that in Spanish too, if you're trying to look at classes, or which different, whether it's the gradebook or...
So, the translation comes in trying to translate the process of getting onto Synergy, translate the process, so you're only translating the process. Once you get into Synergy, you do have documents that are in Spanish, but they learned how to navigate the system, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Is that answering your question?
It does, absolutely. And then, the last question I have is about feeder schools. I noticed, you know, you mentioned that they were entire families, so younger siblings. Do you have, how many feeder schools do you have?
Wow, we have, I believe that we feed, or six, five, five of the elementary schools feed into us, the largest being James River.
Okay.
However, we do have a significant amount from DJ Monique, but we also have Matoca, and we have some that come from Mathewelli as well.
And do you see clusters of L-families from any of those schools?
I'm gonna ask Ms. Miller to answer that question, or Mr. Rivas, because they'll know better than I would.
Okay, so you're presumably working with James River as the kids progress through the school, okay. Well, I applaud your efforts and encourage you to continue them.
And I applaud their efforts because I just came on board, and they are amazing, and this is a community that's willing to serve their community, so I bow down to them.
Additional comments?
Sure. I understand yesterday was your 25th birthday.
Twenty-six. Twenty-six.
But I think this is a wonderful program. I also appreciated how it went to high school students and, you know, just branched not just in the middle school area, and it kind of went to both levels, so I think this is a great, a great, a great thing, and I hope we continue this, and I hope it expands to other schools. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Additional comments, Ms. Hummel?
I just, as always, want to applaud the William &amp; Mary connection because taking advantage of our university right down the street is always great. We've got such skilled people, and to be able to bring them into our local schools is great as well, so hats off to everyone involved.
Ms. Young?
I just want to say ditto, but hello, Ms. Haskins. How are you doing? I congratulate you on this program because I think a lot of times when families come from other countries, they don't know what to expect to be so welcomed, and to James Blair, I think, is absolutely fantastic. So, thank you, thank you so much for your efforts, and don't let Mr. Rivas get away. He has to stay.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Thank you, Ms. Haskins. I think this exemplifies how the demographics in our community are changing, and I applaud the division's efforts to respond to the needs of our students because it's critical, like you said, that all of our students feel included and like they're a part of their school community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for the opportunity. All righty then, moving on to item 7.1, citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for the community to share their thoughts and perspectives with us. I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks you to respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel? Emma Brown? Emma Brown?
Hi. Okay, here we go. Hi, my name is Emma Brown. I'm a senior at Jamestown High School, and I'm here this evening to discuss the public restrooms there. This past Wednesday, my classmate was complaining about the quality of the bathrooms, and so we sat down and we started to list all the things that we could think were problematic within them. So, we came up with things like faulty plumbing, locks, doors, there's a stall that doesn't even have a door in one of the girls' bathrooms. Seats are unhinged, several of the bathrooms are periodically out of soap, and some of the soap dispensers are dysfunctional, and so are some of the hand dryers in the bathrooms as well. So, we were astounded that by the amount of issues with the bathrooms, and they by no means meet Jamestown's high standards to which they uphold their students. We deserve the basic upkeep and maintenance of our bathrooms. So, wanting to change this, I went through the SCA to garner student and staff support and created a petition with over 275 signees, which is just about 20% of Jamestown's population. I took this petition to Mr. Townsend, who was overwhelmingly supportive and encouraged me to come speak tonight. I understand that the capital improvement budget is tight, but I believe that the WJCC School Board should treat this as a priority and assist us through whatever means possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Jennifer Bicamendez?
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the school board. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. My name is Jennifer Bicamendez. I'm a resident of Jame City County and the parent of two recent graduates from Lafayette High School. I'm here to speak today and on behalf of the village, as I'm also a member of the Village Initiative, and the village is very pleased today to be releasing its second annual equity report based on statistics from the Virginia Department of Education. So, I believe this report is either already, you've already received, or it should be in your inboxes very, very soon. So, a number of us came today to highlight some of the findings of the report, and so I was going to talk about one of them, which is rather troubling. I guess I also wanted to say, because I was so happy and excited to be able to see the spotlight on James Blair and to, I guess, recognize that initiative and how pleased I was, and I think many in the community are, to see the recognition that the ESL staff and Mr. Rivas received tonight. So, I certainly just wanted to say on a personal note that I definitely applaud that, and that also, my students and I will be back at James Blair next semester. I'll once again be teaching a course that will involve a partnership with James Blair, so we're very pleased about that. On the less happy side, the report this year does show some troubling trends: the continuation of consistent over-representation in short and long-term suspensions, and a troubling racial discipline gap. In 2018, 2019, students identifying as Black, Hispanic, or two or more races accounted for more than 67% of short-term and more than 86% of long-term suspensions, even though they make up only 39% of the students in the district as a whole. And this trend exists across the school. In particular, there's a gap at Laurel Lane where Black students make up only 15% of the student population, but 75% of short-term suspensions. At Lafayette High School, Black students make up only 21% of the student population, but 60% of short-term suspensions and 67% of long-term suspensions. What I was gonna talk about today, but I don't have time, is how, what studies show, and I was reading one recently, is how achievement gaps and the racial discipline gap track together. So, when you address one, you're addressing the other according to this study. It also means that when there's a problem with the racial discipline gap, according to this study, it also means that students of colored academic needs are probably not being met. So, the village definitely urges continual attention to this urgent matter and hopes that you will take concrete measures to address the racial discipline gap. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Quirk?
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, members of the school board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Amy Quirk. I'm a parent of a first grader, a professor at William &amp; Mary, and a member of the Village Initiative. So, tonight, we are here to present some of the highlights from our 2019 Equity Report, and I wanted to note that we are among the eager group that listens to the school board meetings from the comfort of our own homes many nights, and we were, you know, pleased and encouraged to hear thoughtful discussions at recent meetings about minority recruitment and retention, and the achievement gaps through the Equity Through Engagement series. But tonight, I want to talk about how now is really the time to turn those discussions into action. First of all, needs-based funding. Every member of the school board has expressed public support for allocating resources both across and within schools based on need rather than based on student numbers. So, now is really the time to take action on this consensus about the need for needs-based funding. Second, we were pleased to hear your discussions last Tuesday about minority recruitment and retention. We strongly support aggressive action on competitive salaries for teachers and out-of-the-box thinking like housing stipends and turning our own staff and students into teachers. However, it does seem that our district is able to recruit and retain white teachers despite uncompetitive salaries, but we have more difficulty recruiting and retaining teachers of color. And so, we strongly want to urge you to set up an advisory committee of teachers of color to help develop recommendations to improve retention in particular. Research demonstrates that having a voice in decision-making enhances minority retention. We also need to support ongoing training for all teachers, such as requiring that some teacher professional development credits are fulfilled through training on equity and culturally responsive teaching, and we should also prioritize hiring teachers with certifications in culturally responsive teaching. We also would encourage you, and this really came out of our forum, Integration Then and Now, to diversify the curriculum so that students and minority teachers can see themselves represented in the coursework. This could include strengthening the partnership with the Village Initiative to diversify the local histories that are being told in the classroom through curricular materials and field trips. At our forum, one thing that was emphasized was that Black history and culture was not integrated when students were integrated. So, bringing local history and culture back into the schools can help build these community ties. Also, more recess. I have a first grader. This is good for all students, but it also helps develop the social and emotional skills and the executive functions that are often misidentified as disciplinary problems. Really, it's not developmentally appropriate for students to be sitting all the time. Smaller class sizes, I'm running out of time, and a dual-language learner program to build on these gains with what we see with the English language learners. Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope I'm not gonna mess up this name, but it's Leah Coragano? Hi, my name is Leah Coragano. I speak today as a community member and representative of the Village Initiative. The purpose of my statement today is twofold. First, we want to thank those members of the school board who attended or expressed support for our public forum, Integration Then and Now, held on September 21st. It was very encouraging to those of us who are fighting for our underserved students to see certain members of the school board listen to the panelists with respect and care. The second reason for my statement today is to reiterate and make as clear as possible the purpose of this event. It has come to our attention that public comments were expressed by a certain member of the school board throughout the event, talking over our panelists who were sharing their stories onstage. We consider these comments to be public because they were made at a public event and were fully audible to those seated around them. Among the many comments made were those that dismissed the panelists' experiences and in some cases willfully misinterpreted the statements being made. Because I only have so much time to correct misinformation, I'll respond today to just one erroneous comment. The purpose of the event was not to advocate for the resegregation of schools, but rather to highlight the segregation has not been fully eradicated. Perhaps if more attention was being paid to the panelists, that would have been more clear, but I'm happy to repeat some of the main points. Philip Kennedy, who had attended Lafayette in the 1980s, said, quote, "The schools were integrated by law, but within the schools, they were still segregated. Black students were looked at as though they were not good enough to be with the Caucasian students. The pain still resonates. There are things you experience that you take with you for the rest of your life." Xavier Carter, who graduated from Lafayette just last year, repeated, "By law, the schools are integrated, but in the schools, they are for the most part still segregated." She further explained that she was largely self-taught about African-American history and identity because she only had, quote, "four biracial or Black teachers during her entire time at WJCC schools," none of whom taught main subjects. The other panelists, Edith Hurd, Sylvia Willis, and Janice Kennedy, who attended Bruton Heights before integration, remembered with emotion in their voices the support they felt and the breadth and depth of education they received, all of which largely disappeared when they or their children entered schools in which white students were prioritized and Black students pushed out, or Black teachers pushed out. Not once did any of the panelists say that they wanted segregation back. They want true integration, which can only exist when the support of African-American teachers and full access to Black history is a standard part of the WJCC education. The pain expressed by our panelists who attended so-called integrated schools should be enough to move us all to action. But if that's not enough, the Equity Report presented by the village today demonstrates without a doubt the grave consequences of continued segregation in terms of opportunity and support for our students of color. We know that the large majority of you can see and hear the facts and are taking this seriously. We believe in your ability to make change for our students who so need it. There are many things that you cannot do, and we recognize that, but there is plenty you can do to support all WJCC students, starting with the choice to join us in correcting misinformation from within the school board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Kennedy?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I have been in the school board meeting several times addressing issues at James River Elementary School. I believe research and data are key components in understanding our division needs and what is best for our students and community. Research has shown the benefits of IB programs, however, that research that is so often quoted is based on the continuum of the IB program, meaning IB primary, middle, and beyond, not simply IB primary as we have at James River. We continue to present falsehood in our data to our families and community when we present only parts of the research to continually support the program at James River. We are supposed to be a data-driven school division. If you can show me the research and data that supports the benefit of only having an IB program, I would gladly become the biggest advocate of the IB program at James River. Over a million dollars have been allocated to James River since its inception. No data prior to 2014 seems to exist because it was a loss in a system switch. James River has not had a comprehensive program evaluation using a comparative analysis for how our students are doing at James River compared to another school that does not have IB. No long-term data showing benefits compare a non-IB student with an IB student. We have data, but we are just not using it properly. The IB data should show us graduation rate data, SAT, ACT, SOL data compared to non-IB students. There's no analysis of teacher turnover at James River, no data on yearly waiting lists, if there is a waiting list, no data on how many non-zone students attend James River. There's no data on the number of applicants James River each year. There's no number of data of applicants that James River receives each year. If the program is as great as it seems to be, the way we are presenting it to the community, my question would be, why was 2/3 of the budget cut for school year 18 and 19? But the bigger problem for me at James River is Black students at James River have the lowest SOL pass rates in the state among IB schools. The lowest pass rate in the state among IB schools. I feel I need to say that again. And we've had the lowest math scores for the last five years at James River Elementary School. The only school that's below us is Dutro or Dutro in Newport News. We need to fix what's going on. It's clear in data showing that the IB program is not benefiting... It's clear in data showing that the IB program is not benefiting our African-American kids in Williamsburg, James City County. If we are not going to extend this program to middle school, which we have said very often that we don't have the money and we will not do it, we need to end the IB program and stop sending all the money to a program that's not benefiting our kids in that community.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to try this one. Avanthika Singh. Did I get it okay?
Good evening, School Board officials. Thank you for providing us with the opportunity to discuss our findings with you. My name is Avanthika Singh, and I am a senior studying sociology at the College of William &amp; Mary. I'm currently interning with the Village and have worked with Professor Amy Quark in putting together this year's Equity Report. Our findings reveal that nearly every WJCC school demonstrated significant and consistent gaps in SOL pass rates between white and minority students since the 2012 to 2013 school year. In the 2018-2019 school year alone, all elementary schools had double-digit gaps in the SOL pass rates between white and black students in three or four subjects. Six out of nine elementary schools have 30-point gaps between black and white students in at least one subject. Five out of nine elementary schools have 30-point gaps between Hispanic and white students in at least one subject. At DJ Montague Elementary and James River Elementary, there are 30-point gaps between black and white students in all subjects, including a 47-point gap between black and white students in history and social sciences at DJ Montague, and a 53-point gap between black and white students in science at James River. All middle schools had double-digit gaps in the SOL pass rates between white and black students in at least three subjects. But the gaps at Berkeley Middle are greater than those at Horne'sby or Towano. Gaps in SOL pass rates between white and Hispanic students are also more severe at Berkeley. At Berkeley Middle, only 43% of black students and 30% of Hispanic students passed the reading SOL. And only 44% of black students and 32% of Hispanic students passed the science SOL. All high schools had double-digit gaps in the SOL pass rates between white and black students in at least three subjects. But the gaps at Lafayette are greater than the gaps at Jamestown and Warhill. At Lafayette, there was a 42-point gap between black and white students for reading. The pass rates for English-language learners are variable, in part due to the shifting population numbers in this period. Overall, however, English learners tend to have lower pass rates than white students in all subjects. In order to achieve equity in the WJCC school district, we believe that there should be a range of budget-neutral, no-excuses solutions, including needs-based funding, more recess, ongoing cultural responsiveness training, and enhanced efforts to recruit and retain teachers of color. We also believe that there should be strategic investments in equity-driven initiatives for the benefit of all students.
Thank you. I believe that concludes our speakers for this evening. Moving on to the consent agenda, item 8.1, approval of minutes from the following meeting, October 15, 2019. Item 8.2, financial report and monthly bills and payroll for October 2019. Item 8.3, personnel actions. Item 8.4, retire policy ABB, staff involvement and decision-making. Item 8.5, revised policy BGGBD, board-staff communications. Item 8.6, revise, recode, and rename policy IFD, curriculum review and adoption, to policy IF, curriculum development and adoption. Item 8.7, new policy IGAE, IGAF, health and physical education. Item 8.8, revised policy KH, public gifts to the schools. And finally, 8.9, payroll calendar adjustment is their motion.
Madam Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 9.1, the FY '21-30 Capital Improvement Plan Discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're not presenting any additional information this evening, but the floor is open for board discussion or questions.
I know Ms. Cook has questions. I'll start there and I'll just go down the dais.
I guess comments and questions, if that's okay? Okay. So first of all, I just want to thank the staff for putting this document together. I support it as-is. I want to say that upfront. And I also want to say that I think, generally speaking, with perhaps an exception of a Jamestown bathroom or two, our buildings are in really great shape. And I appreciate the addition of some replacement cycles that have been added with some thoughtful consideration. I really like the addition of the tracks in middle school and some outlying years. I think it's a reflection on a kind of running culture that has been created as part of the running clubs in our elementary schools. And I know that our cross-country teams at the high school level have been getting really, really big, but I definitely see a need at the middle school, I think, in response to that. But I have some, a couple of questions. Well, actually, let me start with, continue with some comments. Just as far as elementary school goes, I appreciate the staff's moving that up to reflect the need that we have. And I just want to state clearly that I support the need, immediate need for an elementary school at current capacity, at current enrollment levels. And even if, even though growth is projected to be slow, I think we need an elementary school today. So I just wanted to clearly say that. But I have a question about shifting to a partial refurbishment plan. Ms. Hummel and I were at Warhill the other day, and that school's, what, 11 years old? Is that right? And so I think it's wonderful to do partial refurbishments and only when it's needed. But the partial refurbishment that's in this plan is only listed once, I believe. And so the things that are not refurbished, if they're not done in 10 years, it could be 20 years before they're looked at again. And so I'm not looking for an answer now, because I didn't give this to you ahead of time, for which I apologize. But if by the next meeting, we could get an answer on that, I'd appreciate it, because I'd just like to understand if we're going to do partial refurbishments, when are we going to look at that again to see if some things that were not refurbished need attention? So I'd like to better understand that. I understand that the projections are pretty clear that we may not need a middle school expansion in the next 10 years, but not seeing it on the plan at all is felt a little uncomfortable. So I don't know if we can do an asterisk that connects the new central office design and construction as a precursor to creating room for a middle school expansion. I don't know if that makes sense or not, but just having that gone was a little bit uncomfortable for me. And then I had a question also about the Lafayette project. Again, I don't need an answer tonight, but that was kept where it is, and the others were shifted in response to new enrollment data, which I support. But if Lafayette comes first, I'm curious if that changes the nature of the capturing of that space, because I guess those programs that are currently in there wouldn't be vacated first. So I'd like to, I don't want an answer now, but I'd like to understand that a little bit better if possible.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. I'll just give everyone an opportunity to, like comments, Ms. Dr. Beers?
Oh. Kelly? Jumping off from where Ms. Cook was on the partial refurbishments, I guess my question was, how do you scope them and estimate them? So, you know, how do you know what the partial refurbishment is? And so how do you scope and estimate? Because there are several partial refurbishments throughout the, and I was just curious as how we scope that. Like Mrs. Cook, I'm not expecting an answer. Kind of hitting you with this cold. So as I just come down through the lines there, there's one where we're replacing gutters. That doesn't seem like a capital cost to me, but I'll let somebody else decide on that. This one, we'll look for an answer, Von. The widening of the road at DJ, do you have a quick description of just what that means? You could got a microphone right there, you're fine.
It's actually a widening of the entrance, not the road.
Okay.
The widening the entrance to allow for additional traffic to go into the parking area.
So once you turn off of News Road, making that more looking like three lanes?
Centerville.
You're right, it is Centerville.
Right.
Thank you. So when you come off Centerville, making that more looking like three lanes and looking like?
It's not a widening of the road, because we don't have, we don't have the authority to widen a V.
Not Centerville. When you turn right off of Centerville or turn, turn off of Centerville into DJ.
Yes.
So you're making that entrance?
You're making the entrance wider, so that you can get more traffic.
More like three lanes?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. That's a good idea. So Matthew Whaley, the window replacement, is that all the windows at Matthew Whaley? For $237,000?
I would have to get you an answer on if it's all of them or just?
There's a lot of windows at Matthew Whaley.
And they're not vinyl sided?
And they're wood, and they're just, it's a lot, lot of. Curiosity question, James River, the gym refurbishment, $250,000 out 10 years, what is that going to buy me in 10 years?
Gym refurbishments were placed in the Capital Improvement Plan this year, so we can replace backboards, we can replace goals, so we can replace padding and walls, and if need be, replace the wood floor if it had been sanded too much over the last, over that course of life.
Okay. We get to Towano and also Lafayette. We talk about building refurbishment. What is that?
Refurbishment includes paint, carpet, and tile. However, as you are aware, at Lafayette, we have rubberized tile, and the life expectancy on that is a little longer than vinyl composite.
Because, because like in Lafayette?
I didn't hear you. Wait, what was that?
We have rubberized tile.
Rubberized tile at Lafayette High School.
That's a little, that's expected.
That has a little more life expectancy than?
That's longer.
Yes.
So at Lafayette, you have a partial refurbishment, repaint interior, a partial refurbishment, carpet, and then you have a building refurbishment. I just wonder what the difference in those three line items is. And the building refurbishment is $5 million out in 2028. So, once again, just curious, just kind of trying to understand what that means. Several of the smaller, smaller number projects, I'd like to hope we can kind of get those done with year-end spending plans going forward as we manage through the money there. The buses, currently, we have the buses in 2025. Should we move those to the left? Have we thought about that since the last meeting?
Just discussing that this evening. I was placed in FY '25 based on the timing of when James Blair was completed. We received funding for construction in fiscal year '16, and the school opened in fiscal year '19.
So we receive funding for construction? Okay. I'll let you, I'll let you think about that. The one thing, I agree with the comments about the elementary school, that we need to move forward with that as soon as possible, because obviously, our numbers are showing that we're very packed. And if we get any kind of growth, like Mrs. Cook said, you know, we have agreed to use the low projections, we've agreed, and those have been good for us. You know, Arbemarele County had 300 students show up above their expectations this year, and they look a little bit like us. They're 14,000, a little bit bigger than us, but they're still kind of a similar community. And I'm just concerned that, particularly with the difference between our low and our most likely, that's a significant gap to me between those two projections, which is somewhat disconcerting to me that if, with six lanes going all the way to Richmond, I just see that Williamsburg is an attractive location that might have opened up that other, that families might not have looked at before. So, but, however, comma, it does put a lot of pressure on our funding partners to find land. So you can't start design until you have land. And if we're going to get funded in June for design, it'd be nice to know where you're going to put the school. So that's just, just a comment.
Mr. Kelly, have I got to speak to the buses just for a moment, I believe, because the elementary school was originally a year later, that the buses were aligned with that and with the movement of the school up, we failed to move the buses up, so they should be one year earlier.
Do you agree with that? That's not what you, that's not what you just told me before. Of course, I agree with my boss. I thought, I thought, I thought that's not how you explained it, explained it when we talked about Blair, that there was three, they were three years later, which?
The difference between a middle and an elementary school, the timeframe may well be different.
They can build, you can build an elementary school quicker.
Hope.
I hear you. So.
Slightly smaller.
Let's get a definitive answer on that and figure out where we want to, where we want to put them. And then, so when we go to our, when we go to prove our, when we make this the School Board's capital budget, that we have it in the right year. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Young?
Yes, first of all, I guess, referring back to James River, do we know, when was the last refurbishment of James River? Do we have that information?
I can get that for you. I don't know that right off the top of my head right now.
Okay, I know that a lot of the partial refurbishments are painting and, I'm trying to look for some of the other things, but what is involved in a full refurbishment of a building? I mean, besides being pricey, but, I mean, what, what do they change?
Well, in a full refurbishment, you're looking at replacing all of your tile on your floor, all of your carpet. You're repainting the entire school. And in a partial refurbishment, what we would need to do is go around and do selective areas that need to be repaired or projects. So some carpets may need to be replaced in some rooms, some carpets may not. Some tiles may be replaced in some areas, some may not, because there are wear and tear from where the traffic goes in and out of a facility.
So, but a full refurbishment doesn't involve changing ACs and heating units and things like that?
No, they're in our Capital Improvement Plan every 20 years, and so they don't always coordinate with their regular refurbishment cycles of 14 years.
I mean, I know that you're busy walking through the schools and checking on everything. I know you were doing that at DJ the other day, so I do appreciate it. I just, it just seems like that's a lot of money to do a full refurbishment. But again, I would hate to see because of the cycle that we're missing something, so.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
I'm going to talk a little more about the refurbishment, because I have a couple questions related to our speaker tonight. Basic things like bathroom hinges, missing doors, faulty plumbing, isn't that just operating expenses? It doesn't really come under a CIP or refurbishment, does it?
You are correct. They are operating expenses, and those kind of work orders are usually placed through our work order system. So we will look into that tomorrow to determine if work orders have been entered and discuss with our facilities staff.
Okay, because that, to me, I was like going, that should just be taken care of, in my mind, with a work order. So thanks for clarifying that. And then, going back to the partial refurbishment question, when we were at Warhill, so Warhill is how old, 12 years old now?
It's built in 2007.
Okay, so is it, is it, do its full, typical full refurbishment at 14 years? Is that correct?
That is correct. If you recall, a few years ago, we have adjusted those schedules and the refurbishment, what we were looking at, refurbishment, instead of doing a total replacement, we did system replacements for our refurbishment cycles.
But Jamestown and Lafayette got full refurbishments after 14 years?
Lafayette and Jamestown did receive full refurbishments when we refurbished those earlier in 2014, I believe.
And so we're changing that policy going into a partial refurbishment now?
Yeah, when we had the Facility Condition Index completed by an external firm, how many years ago, Mr. Snipes?
2015, 2016?
They actually broke down the refurbishments to allow us to be able to stagger them over time, and we went to partial refurbishment at that point in time to really look at things that really needed refurbishment, because we had some tiles and floors, which were still in excellent condition, because they've been very well maintained. We didn't go in, want to go in and just rip up something that looked perfect. And so that's when we started really analyzing each building and its needs when it comes up for refurbishment in the cycle.
So then I guess it just begs the question that Ms. Cook asked, when, when, when does that ref- So then I guess it just begs the question that Ms. Cook asks, when, when, when does that refurbishment cycle get complete? So like at, at what point, if you're only doing a partial refurbishment and the tiles now that look okay, maybe in four years aren't okay, when, when do they get refurbished? And to make sure that there is equity among all of our schools with regard to refurbishing tiles and painting and carpeting and things like that. Um, and I also, keeping in mind the, uh, perhaps the upkeep, the upkeep of the, um, tiles, for example. So with the new rubber tiles, there's less upkeep, I've been told.
That is correct.
Versus the older, the older tiles that have to be waxed and cleaned in a different way, so in a way, we, are we looking at things like that when you're replacing the new tiles that will create a lower operating expense? Versus not replacing them, keeping the old ones and having a larger operating expense for cleaning?
We do look at the cost benefit analysis and the return on investment, um, rubberized tiles are a little more pricey than vinyl composite. Um, but just to give you an example, if you've been in Stonehouse, that school is twenty years old and those tiles have never been replaced and they're in very good condition because custodians maintain them. So we will go through and look at areas that need to be taken up and sometimes in, in between those cycles, our maintenance staff go in and pop up tiles and put new one, new one down when they start to crack, so.
Yeah, and we'll, we'll look at the outer years and give you a sense of when things will come into the cycle again. And I think, you know, the, the different length of durability of materials will be part of that, that discussion moving forward. And we're probably close to the point when we will need to, to redo the facility conditions index at some point to have all of this information refreshed to, to begin to make sure that we're, we're keeping everything the way it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Um, I would just like to add for the community's understanding of the CIP process, that we're, we're voting on five years and I appreciate staff's work to help us look further down the road and to help our funding partners kind of keep their eye on the ball for what is going to happen in the next ten years, recognizing that that's somewhat fluid. Um, and then just wanted to reiterate for the broader community's understanding with regard to, to buildings, um, none of our buildings were designed to be a hundred percent full. That's not, um, best practice educationally and so, um, current capacity is, is, um, it's difficult in some, in some buildings and so we are very squished. And we're using space in multipurpose ways. And so just want to make it clear that even if a building is at ninety-two or ninety-three or ninety-four percent, it wasn't designed to be at a hundred percent. And if we waited till buildings were a hundred percent full, recognizing it takes two to three years to build a building, it would be well over that. And we are a community that's growing. So thanks, um, to staff for, for putting this together and helping us kind of predict what we're going to need in twenty thirty. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, actually, two things, one, to add clarity, so we do actually adopt a ten-year plan and then the localities adopt a five-year plan and they fund one year.
Yes, yes, that is what I meant and I misspoke.
Um, and I just wanted to follow up on the, um, the auxiliary gym at War Hill and we asked some questions last meeting and, um, and so I just wanted to make sure that we're gonna get those answers at some point, there hasn't been much time to get them, but just in terms of the use agreement with James City County and, and, and so if we could get some clarity on that. And the, the design for that structure was, is in the current CIP year, is that correct? So that's been funded. Has any of that work been, is that any of that work underway and does that have to be changed now that there might be a different design based on the potential need for it to be shelter?
Um, we've been in preliminary conversations with purchasing, but no RFP or IFB have been done yet because of those.
So there's, so there's the time to adjust based, and will the cost of that change because of the, because of the need for it to potentially be a shelter?
Cost of design change, is that what you're saying? No, we don't anticipate.
So we don't, there's no issue with that?
Ms. Young?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to just say because we are asking for a new elementary, uh, school, I, I spoke to somebody that was asking about, do we really need it? Well, if our first concern for, for me, so I, the first concern is the safety and security of kids, if you have children that are out in outlined buildings, they're not as secure as students that are within a, a facility. The other thing is tonight, we, they, it was brought forth about lower class size, if you don't have classrooms that have lower class size, you can't have it. You can put another teacher in the room, but then there's all kinds of things that sometimes interfere with that plan. So we, if we're going to actually, um, invest in having lower, lower class size, then we have to have the space to do that. And going into many of our buildings, you will see curtains in spaces where, um, you know, individual, um, um, people are working with students and that's not ideal either because if you have a classroom that walks by, then there's noise. So I think if we're going to be serious about looking at things like smaller class size to help, uh, one of the things tonight was about the achievement class, uh, achievement gap, then we need to be serious about providing space.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, actually, two things, um, um, and you don't, you won't have the answer tonight, but I'm, one of the things I'm really curious about James River, uh, we've heard a lot about James River and we've heard it, uh, for a number of years now in terms of, um, academic gaps and, um, the percentage of students that are on free and reduced lunch. What I'd like to know is if we drastically reduced the teacher-student ratio, given the nature of that school population, would, do we have enough space, net, will we have enough space in that building in order to accomplish something like that? And, and I'm talking about, um, a ratio of, of ten to twelve, thirteen, maybe, students per teacher, I'm just curious about that. Second point is, um, can anybody tell us where we are with the discussions with the county in terms of, uh, land for the elementary school? And, and, um, you know, we don't have to disclose anything, but I'd just like to know, are we, where are we on that? Are we, you know, are, are these ongoing discussions or, or have some areas been identified, but we don't need to know what they are, I'm just.
Dr. Beers, we, we, we have had one meeting with the county and city that Mr. Stevens put together and we've, to bring us together to start to look at land options. And at our next meeting, I believe, we're looking to do an analysis of where the student populations is, is most dense and where the, would be the best placement for a school. Um, but available land is always, is always, will drive most of the discussion. So we're, we're in beginning and very preliminary conversations, but at least the search has started for land for a new elementary school.
Good.
Uh, also, in, in answer to your James River question, I know Mr. Walker has, uh, knows all of our schools very well at this point and has walked all of them, but he also is very familiar with class ratios and I believe he probably can address that question this evening.
Our, um, class ratios K to five, based on the September thirtieth enrollment, James River Elementary does have the lowest class size coming in K to five at nineteen point eight to one.
It's nineteen point eight, yeah.
So it is, and our highest, Stonehouse and Matoka, twenty-three to one, now that's an average of kindergarten to fifth grade.
But I'm, I'm just, you know, one of the things about that, you know, we talk about research. One of the things about research is if you can get the one to fifteen, you see significant differences. Above one fifteen, it could be one to thirty. The differences are, it's not gonna be as significant, but if you can get to one to fifteen, one to fourteen, you really do see changes in the academic performance of, uh, of students, particularly the ones who, who need, who need the attention the most, that's all.
Yes, sir.
I'm just putting that out.
And then I guess just some final examples, I've mentioned these before, so I didn't want to be redundant, but maybe different people are watching us on TV tonight and so I just wanted to jump off of what Ms. Young said. Um, you know, our, our staff and our buildings do a really great job with the space that they have, but my experience, particularly in elementary schools, um, with regard to our current capacity is that, for example, specialized therapies, OTPT, speech and language, instead of, um, providing those services and, and designated space, those are oftentimes provided on a stage. And like the curtains that Ms. Young was talking about, um, when we need to provide, um, literacy or remediation or specialized tutoring, that's done in the hallways now with little makeshift classrooms and curtains. Um, we no longer have dedicated band and orchestra space in some of our elementary schools and so we have condensed lunches which impact all of our students so that the cafeteria can be used for simultaneous orchestra and band instruction, imagine that. So those are just some of the examples, so when folks don't understand why, um, our schools aren't a hundred percent full and, and, and think that schools should be a hundred percent full, um, that's, that's not, that's not best practice. And so we are doing a great job with the space that we have, but it would be great to have more flexibility to, to meet the needs of our students, um, and not in less cramped way.
I just, I just want to talk about a hundred percent full. So, you know, an auditorium, you can count all the, all the, all the, all the, all the chairs that are there and say it's a hundred percent full. Schools are a little bit different as far as what your ratios are and, you know, if you add one to every classroom, now you got, it's a different quote unquote hundred percent, but there is an equity element to that equation. So James River is our only school that's under eighty-five percent and so it, and it's, you know, on all of our charts, it's white and it looks like it could have a lot of, you can put a lot worse kids in there, but it's seventy-two percent free and reduced lunch, it's, it's nineteen percent ELL. And so I would tell you that James River is probably full because of the, of the equity issues there. So, so when we start doing math based upon, on capacities of schools, it's not, it's not like my day job where it's obvious, it's, there's, there's a lot of other, um, variables and issues that go into that. And so, so we gotta just kind of be careful when we talk, I have a conversation about a hundred percent full and what that, what that really means. So, um, you know, there's, there's, there's academic programming, there's equity, there's a lot of things that have to go into what you call a hundred percent, so.
Ms. Hummel?
I would also add that the school that's in the red on this chart, Matthew Whaley, is one hundred percent full. They have trailers, so just as another example, if they were one hundred percent full in, in what normal people might think means one hundred percent full, they, they shouldn't have any trailers at all, correct? There should be no need, you know, but a school that is one hundred percent full needs trailers to accommodate the ex, you know, the children in that school. So I just wanted to, and, and those, that's one of my problems I've always had with trailers being out, it's not the best with regard to safety and all of that. So I really don't want to see a lot of our elementary schools with trailers.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Ms. Cook? And I just would like to add, I think a lot of us who, um, are talking about this and making decisions around whether we need a tenth, uh, elementary school, went to school at a time when kids, more so than today, came in neat packages of twenty-five. Today, our kids' instructional needs are, are very different than when we went to school and there's a, a lot of movement, if you go into an elementary school, you kid, you see kids rotating through small group instruction based on their needs, based on the subject. And so you see a lot of rotation within the classroom, a lot of rotation outside of the classroom, a lot of kids being pulled out for specific, uh, special needs, a lot of ki, a lot of teachers being pushed in, uh, for, for different, um, for different enrichment, the kids, our kids are going to, um, music and to band and to, um, orchestra and to media and to, um, I know I'm forgetting something, uh, but the related arts. And so that level of movement requires space and that's, that's what makes our school division good, that's what makes our school division high quality. And clearly, we heard today that we have some, um, room for improvement, certainly, but, um, I just think that people's vision of what it is, our kids no longer go in and stay in a classroom all day except for lunch and recess, that is not how kids learn today.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And then just, just to add to this, and maybe then we'll move on, um, I think, I know that, that, um, Dr. Heron and, and staff have been walking through each of our schools to get an understanding of how we currently use space and we'll be sharing that information with our funding partners. But again, just take, thought, thinking about our changing demographics, the number of, uh, English language learners, the number of students with disabilities, we have more self-contained classrooms currently than we've had probably ever in this division and you can't put twenty-six students in that kind of environment that's usually capped at eight to ten students. And so recognizing the, our community's academic needs and understanding space, that's, that is, that's not a black and white, it's not a ninety-eight percent or a one hundred percent, it, it is, it is very fluid and it's based on students' academic needs. And so just need to make that clear to the community, um, that it's, it's a very involved process in deciding space needs. And so I appreciate staff's time and, and trying to flesh all that out and unless there's further, um, comments, um, we'll move on to, um, item nine point two, approved resolution for amendment to the lease for Cell Uro Tower at Lafayette High School.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Ewing is going to present a renewal of a lease this evening for your consideration. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Heron. Agenda item before you this evening is a request to amend the current land lease agreement for a cell tower located at Lafayette High School. Initial lease was signed in August of two thousand and eight with an initial expiration date of two thousand and thirty-four after all lease extensions. The proposed changes include the following, a reduction in the monthly rental amount from the current amount of two thousand nine hundred eleven to two thousand one hundred, decrease in the annual escalation of that monthly rent from three percent to two percent. Adding a twelve percent revenue sharing component to WJCC for future sub-tenants, which would be new potential revenue. There's a one-time signing bonus of five thousand dollars that would be received upon acceptance of the amended terms. In addition, the new expiration date with all renewals would extend until two thousand sixty-four. Amendment has been reviewed by the attorney, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Kelly?
No, 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 I didn't, I wouldn't pay attention.
I'll get you second, Dr. Beers.
So I, I assume we do all the numbers here and we're coming out ahead of on, on all this?
We are not.
So why would we, why would we do that? Why would we renew a lease to where, why would we make changes?
Well, there is the potential that they would choose to terminate the lease and then we would lose the revenue altogether.
I'm, I'm done.
Dr. Beers?
Overall, in next year's budget, it would actually be a decrease of about seven thousand dollars in the particular revenue line.
Seven thousand dollars on a hundred and thirty-five million dollar budget?
Yeah.
I got it.
I, I, I guess I have a couple of questions about that. Uh, I know something about corporations that have, uh, located their businesses in Delaware and I know about all the tax breaks they get over there. I'm curious, um, what the need, what, what reason they have given for, for trying to reduce lease? If, if anything, I would increase the lease. And, and I guess the other thing is, I'm, I'm not quite, because I don't have all the numbers in front of me, I, I'm, I'm not quite sure, what, what is the percentage of increase per year for the duration of the lease or doesn't that happen?
It would increase each April from, it would increase by two percent each April. So the twenty-one hundred would go up to twenty-one forty-two and so forth, the duration.
And, and they, and they want it reduced now? I'm, I'm sorry, I saw that in here somewhere.
The proposal is to reduce.
Yeah, reduce the annual rent. They want to reduce the annual rent?
Yes. And they've added another revenue sharing component, so they would like to sublease to other.
You gonna share it with us or with the county?
With us.
With us?
Yes.
Okay. And I, I'm, I'm just not.
I, I have a.
You're talking about a billion-dollar corporation and I'm, I'm having a hard time.
Do, do we, um.
Feeling, geez, poor guys, we need to lower the rent, um, so I'm.
How many, um, schools do we do?
I, I mean, yeah, I guess.
Do we have this?
I, I.
I'll wait till.
Are we asking, are we asking enough? Asking enough? How did you?
So what she told, what she told me when I asked the question was that they could just cancel the lease and go somewhere else because the rates are different at a different tower. That's what I believe I heard, right?
Yeah, but.
So, so the question is, if you stick to where you are, will you get, will you go nothing and, and they go somewhere else?
So will you be stuck with the tower that T-Mobile or maybe Sprint, maybe somebody else would like?
Or not?
Why not?
Or not?
Okay, I, I just, uh.
And one other thing, Dr.
You know, I'm, I'm sorry.
One other thing, Dr. Beers, is that there's a, they've added the opportunity to, uh, I believe, sublet, um, the act. sublet the actual tower. And then we actually would have a percentage of that as well, which we didn't have before. So there is an additional.
So we're gonna, we will ultimately come out farther ahead if we go with this?
If they were to sublet significantly, it could mean more income for us, but it's hard to judge at this point in time. But there is the possibility of that in the renewed lease.
I know Ms. Hummel has a question, and I think Ms. Cook, but I want clarification, Dr. Heron. So if we were able to sublet, does that mean that we then could recoup some of the $7,000 annually that we're losing? Is that what?
The tenant would sublet, is my understanding, Ms. Ewing.
Yes, the tenant would sublease and we would receive 12% of that revenue.
Which we don't have that option now.
We don't have that option now. And I cannot quantify that for you.
Right. But we're losing $7,000 this year. Next year it would be 12, right? Because there's.
No. In next year's budget, we would have to reduce that particular line item by approximately 7,000.
Okay. But this year the loss is less stark because it's a $5,000.
It should break even this year.
Okay, okay, got it. Are they currently subletting?
I do not have the answer to that. I can find out.
Okay, I mean, so our current lease agreement doesn't say anything one way or the other, doesn't disallow it or?
I'm not sure.
Okay. And then my other question is, how many other schools or are there any other schools where we have cell towers? Or is Lafayette the only one?
Lafayette is the only one.
Ms. Young?
So when we're negotiating something like this, how do they come up with these numbers like 12%? I mean, what benefit is 12%? I mean, it sounds okay, but who's getting the other 88%? I mean, it's our property, right? They're on our property and they're willing to give us, willing to give us 12%? And we have agreed to this?
We haven't agreed to anything. It's up to the board to accept or.
I mean, and then they're planning on reducing our rent and then they're going from 3% to 2%. It sounds to me like everything is for their benefit. I mean, as funny as for our school system, it's not for their benefit. So anyway, maybe you need a new negotiator.
Well, it's driven by market forces, right? So there's a couple of cell towers out there around the peninsula that you can figure out what their rent rates are. If their rent rates are less than what our rent rates are, then the crap shoot you're shooting is that you get nothing. The Verizon goes to a different cellphone tower with lower rates that has the same coverage. So it's all market-driven things. So it's not like we live in a bubble and we have the only cell tower in James City County. So when they've come to us, they've come to us to say we want to reduce your rate because they probably have a, be thinking about going somewhere else because of what you're paying us. And so it's just like, it's just, you know, the 12% is just like, you know, you buy a house and then you rent it to somebody else. You don't give the guy who owns it the rent money. So, I mean, it's all market-driven.
I understand about the market. I do. But it just sounds to me like we're not getting what we need.
But we don't know what other cell towers are getting rent for.
But I'm assuming those other cell towers are rented to other communication companies and they're, I don't think they're willing to sublet their cell tower to this company.
Oh, they would. My day job, we have cell towers and they sublet all the time.
Bow to your expertise. Dr. Beers?
I know the original lease has been in effect since 2015. Have they subleased during that period?
I will have to get that information for you.
No?
I do not, I do not know.
We don't know, oh, we don't know.
Ms. Cook?
So Mrs. Young talked about negotiating. Did we negotiate or did they just offer this and we ran it by our attorney? Like, was there negotiation process at all?
I believe the initial amount that they wanted to propose was less than 2,000 per month and Mr. Meade negotiated with them and settled on 2,100.
Okay, so our attorney didn't just stick to the legalese, but also the financial piece of it too, a little bit. Okay. And then I heard you say that if we decline this, they may walk away. But I guess I have two questions. Can they walk away? Are they stuck in any way? And if they do walk away, do they take their equipment with them? Like, are we stuck with the cell tower on our property that we have no use for?
I believe it is their equipment and they would take it with them.
Are they compelled?
They would have to provide notice.
And they're compelled to do that, though, to take it?
I believe so.
It sounds like there's several questions that the board has concerning this. So we'll try to write those up and then run them by and make sure we're prepared to, you know, discuss perhaps this again at a future meeting, if that's what the board would like to do.
But you do recommend approving this, Dr. Heron?
I believe that, as far as we're aware, but we will check to make absolutely sure that there was no option for subleasing on the previous lease. But we will confirm that. There is potential for revenue there. I think my greatest concern, as Mr. Kelly mentioned, is that we're not the only game in town when it comes to renting towers for services. And it does still provide some valuable income to the school division. It does diminish it a little, but we don't know the potential of subleasing. So we could come out the same, we could come out slightly worse. There's a little bit of unknown, but we're guaranteed an income source that we wouldn't have if we choose to walk away entirely at this moment in time. But we can certainly try to bring back some other questions or get them for you prior to the next board meeting. So there's a level of comfort with the board and moving forward if you so choose.
Yeah, I think providing some additional information ahead of the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Just so far afield from our typical course of business.
Absolutely.
Okay, so moving on to item 10.1. This is the 2020 and 2021 school calendar survey results. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Murphy is now leading our calendar development process. He's the lucky person for the next year at least. And he's bringing some survey results tonight, gives us a sense of what the community felt when we gave the survey about the calendar. And also going to remind the public of the process for calendar development and the role of the board in that process. Dr. Murphy, thank you.
Well, thank you. And good evening, Madam Chair, board members and Dr. Heron. Tonight, I will briefly share with you the results of the online regional calendar survey responses for the upcoming and future academic calendars. As you know, since 1986, the King-Dominions Law required schools to open after Labor Day unless they qualified for a special waiver. This past February, the Virginia General Assembly voted to eliminate the King-Dominions Law, prompting discussion from our partner districts about the beginning of the school year earlier. The change in law now allows divisions to set a 180-day calendar where students attend up to 14 days before Labor Day, with the condition that schools are closed from the Friday immediately preceding Labor Day throughout the holiday. Currently, 87 of Virginia's 132 school divisions are open in August.
Thanks.
WJCC schools, along with Hampton, Newport News, Pecosin, Gloucester, and York, all launched the same survey on September 23rd through October 6th. WJCC received over 3,000 responses during the survey period, and the following results were shared and discussed at the Regional Calendar Committee meeting held on November 5th. The vast majority of our respondents identified themselves as parents. We also had a strong representation of the voices of our employees as well. The survey posed the question, why consider a pre-Labor Day start? The potential to end the school year earlier, the potential to end first semester before winter break, and the opportunity for additional makeup days were among our most frequent responses. The survey also asked what should be the main consideration when considering the pre-Labor Day start. For the WJCC community, our most frequent response was family commitments and vacations, followed by student work schedules and summer camps. When considering the change, more frequent breaks for the students and teachers were most important, followed closely by an earlier end to the school year. When presented the option to select how many days we begin prior to Labor Day, our community would prefer an earlier start to be within one to five days of our current start time. This survey also included a section for open responses. Our team met to process the nearly 1,500 comments that were provided. Some of the sentiments that were expressed were as follows. You can see the desire to end the school year earlier and fall sports trials make the list. Other themes that occurred as we analyzed the data. One of the main things we wanted to bring your attention to was the desire for a one-year notice to make the plan because they wanted to make sure we had time, they wanted to have time to adjust to the new plan. And there was also concern that occurred about the structure of our survey as well. So we had a lot of voices heard about the way the survey items were worded. This is an outline of the process we used to develop the 2020 to 2021 calendar. So far, the regional committee has met twice and we have analyzed the data from our survey. The WJCC Calendar Committee will meet to discuss the data from the survey and any other considerations taken into account prior to crafting our draft calendar to recommend to the board. Lastly, the board will consider and potentially adopt the recommended calendar. Of course, the draft calendar is not final until the board gives its approval. Pending your questions.
Questions, Ms. Young?
Right. I remember at our last meeting, it was mentioned that there was a desire to have a one-year waiting period before the calendar comes forth. Is that true of all of our neighboring school districts also? Was that something that neighboring school districts also wanted? Was that additional year for planning?
Yes, ma'am. I went to the Regional Calendar Committee and when we were disaggregating some of the data, that was a prominent theme that there was a lot of angst in all of our surrounding communities about having this change come in this next school year. And a lot of the parents were, they would prefer to have a one-year waiting time.
And I assume that's because family vacations and summer commitments have already in the works. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
These, you have down here that this is the school calendar regional survey results, but the results that you're showing us are WJCC results, not the regional results, right?
Right. It was a regional survey, but it was given locally. We only analyze our local results.
Okay.
Right.
Did these results from WJCC match or somewhat, were they in alignment to the rest of the regions when you went to the regional meeting?
I would say there was a lot of, yes, there was overlap. There was a lot of overlap. There were some small pockets of different opinions on certain areas, but there was a lot of overlap. Our results were not remarkable and indifferent from the others.
Okay. And then just to reiterate what Mrs. Young said, the decision to wait a year was a regional committee recommendation?
Well, that came up from the committee. The committee has not made any recommendations per se. They were going to wait until they meet again on the second to form their official recommendations. But that is definitely a sentiment that came up from all of our communities.
Okay, so they're going to make the recommendation on the second, but we already made our recommendation?
We haven't made an official recommendation yet, but the regional superintendents and their discussions wanted to communicate to the community that there is every likelihood we will be holding off on that decision. I think the announcement we made was a bit more definitive than that, but to make it more clear this evening, we probably will present a calendar to the board that is in line with regional thinking on the survey, which suggests we don't start before Labor Day next year. But ultimately, the board makes the final decision on that because the board decides on the calendar. So we may bring a calendar through that's in line with the thinking of all of us, but ultimately the board has jurisdiction for that decision.
Okay, because that wasn't clear last week.
What was clear is that we sent a message to the parents saying that we weren't going to start before Labor Day next year.
Correct. And I take responsibility for that. It was, it sounded like a definitive decision and that was my mistake.
Okay, so it's not, it's our general thought, thoughts.
It was our.
We're going, but we haven't made a definitive proposal, voted.
Correct.
Out there yet.
Correct, because that comes through committee, comes to the board, and the board makes a final decision. And our eagerness to communicate with the community because we're getting lots of questions about holidays and next year and early start because it's very much a conversation right now, we overstepped and sent out a message.
Yeah, like for instance, you have people out there renting houses for the week before Labor Day.
Correct.
And so last week they were saying, okay, we're good. Now this week they're like, whoa, are we good?
Yeah, and I think it's, we will, we're going to bring a calendar fairly soon, probably January, to the board for consideration. The committee's meeting on this December 13th.
The WJCC committee meets on the 13th, the regional meets on the second. So I'll bring all the information from the regional calendar committee to the WJCC committee and we can compose a draft.
And then that draft will come to the board and the board will make a definitive decision.
Right. But based upon consensus of the regional committee right now is that they are not going to start before Labor Day next, they're not going to recommend a start before Labor Day next year.
That would be true.
Just based on consensus, but not on any kind of formal recommendation or action of any specific school board.
Correct. Yes, sir.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I actually have a couple of questions that I, one is a request, and that is if we ever do get to the point where it appears that a recommendation will be coming from administration and the regional group to start before Labor Day, if that ever does come to pass, it would be great to compress that timeline and move it up so that, you know, people, we don't have to stick to our current timeline, which is to do that. Well, we just did that, right? Didn't we just adopt the, no, wait. We talked about, when did we adopt, is it January we adopted the calendar? Yeah. So anyway, do it now or sooner. And I'm sorry.
If I might add, we usually do it in February, which is why we're having all of these conversations much earlier this year because of the potential for a change.
So, but if that does come to pass, I would say let's continue the idea of doing it a little bit earlier so people can plan, as Mr. Kelly said. And then again, I don't want these questions answered tonight, but when we do consider and take action on the calendar, I would like to know, we've never really been able to think about this as a board because we've never been able to start before Labor Day and with the regional constraints, the decisions that we've had to make or had the authority to make have been really pretty narrow. So I guess I have three questions. One is, is there evidence that students who start before Labor Day benefit academically? I would like to know if there's evidence to that end. Again, not tonight, but when the calendar is presented because it will inform my thinking. And are we obligated to stick with the regional calendar? And what would happen if we didn't? Again, it's never real, I'm not suggesting we don't, but we've never really been able to contemplate that before. And I would just like to know what would happen if we chose to think independently or act independently. I would like to understand what those ramifications would be academically and financially.
Well, I can't speak to the second question right now. We are sharing of services, especially with New Horizons and some of the other school systems. And so if we go to a separate calendar, we're going to have to de-conflict the amount of services that we're going to be able to have. Our children may not have access to the same services or at least the amount of hours when it comes to the CTE courses that are being taught. So we'll have to figure out a way if we go off that calendar that our region is sharing, how we're going to deliver the same level of services.
Yeah, no, I'd like to know how many students and what that would, I'd just like to know the impact.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Kelly?
So it's not only CTE, it's governor's school and it's all the rest of the services that our students get from New Horizons. Thank you. So, but when you bring a calendar to us, you bring us this year's calendar for approval and you have a second calendar that's kind of draft for the next year. So we would have, so this, so if we're not going to start before Labor Day next year, we would have. we would have the calendar that says we're going to start before Labor Day for the year after, right?
Twenty-one, twenty-two, yes, sir.
And so then, and so then, to Mrs. Cook's point, we could, we could move that up and approve that as more of a, if, assuming the region, Regional Calendar Committee should also kind of come with us and say, okay, we're going to approve this in June for the year ahead, so that people understand, can understand and can make plans.
Absence of another legislative change, we have that information now that we didn't have a year prior.
Right, right. And, but we, like, to Mrs. Cook's point again, we could, we could make these decisions before because the General Assembly didn't allow us, because we are east of sixty, of ninety-five. But that's another story.
Any additional comments, questions? The Calendar Committee is meeting December thirteenth, and I would like to appoint a school board member to, to serve on that committee as well. And so, I would like to appoint Dr. Beers, that committee. Thank you, Dr. Beers. So, it looks like there's just one meeting.
You're welcome.
You knew that was coming, right?
Yeah, I didn't know about the other calendar, though.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item eleven point one, board members' comments and requests. I'll start with, I'll change things up. I'm going to start with Ms. Young.
Okay. Yesterday, I had the opportunity of visiting DJ Montague for employee appreciation. I appreciate this initiative so much because I, we saw at the beginning all of the wonderful slides and visitations of schools, but I think letting our employees know how much we appreciate them is really important. I want to thank Ms. Vasquez for entertaining us and taking us from out of school with the, the music program that we were allowed to go in and got to do the Vivaldi's Autumn, which was fun, and the little kids were having a great time, and I did too. The other thing is on, visited Berkeley Middle School with Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel. And really was hoping that one of them would go first, because don't remember the name of the lady who we were talking to about attendance?
Selena Shambly.
Shambly.
Shambly, okay. Because she was pointing out all of the things they're doing at Berkeley Middle to increase the attendance and the positive things that they're doing, the positive ways that they are working with students to make sure that they get to school. And I appreciated listening to her so, so much, because we often don't think about attendance until a kid isn't attending, but to see their efforts is, is pretty amazing. One thing I did want to say about the CTE commi- committee, I don't think we recognize that, that on this committee, there's many partnerships with the, the community. Mr. Apollo and the count, and Sherry, I don't remember her last name. But they, they spend a lot of time preparing for those meetings and, and on this committee, there's also a student, which is pretty amazing. And just listening to him and getting his input, it's a remarkable organization. I, I love being on that committee and just seeing the opportunities that are coming forth for our students. I did want to congratulate Jamestown Golf and the Lafayette, Lafayette Theater. And Dr. Miani looked really proud, like a proud daddy tonight, which I thought was wonderful. I do want to give kudos to the village efforts. They're, they're very involved in making sure our minority community is served. I did want to point out that, that most of our schools, MTSS is in full, full-blown work, works right now. And we're working with students, helping them change, sometimes we have to change the, the hearts of students as well as their minds. And I think our school district is really working hard to do that. And just appreciate everything that our school, our kids are doing and our students. And, and tonight, we saw, we saw the opportunities that are coming with, from, from James Blair with the ELL and that just kind of spurs us on to bigger and better things. I do appreciate everything that our staff and faculty is doing.
Ms. Young, Ms. Taylor?
Um, another quick congratulations to all our students who were honored tonight. It's always awesome to see all the things that are going on. Um, and thank you to our community members who came out to speak with us. I always appreciate that as well.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This week, Ms. Hummel, or last week, rather, Ms. Hummel and I toured War Hill with Supervisor Eisenhower. And we had an opportunity to see where the auxiliary gym will likely go and then also where an addition, if and when that addition happens, where that, that will go. And that's where we learned, Mr. Snipes, about the refurbishments cycle and where those questions came from. So, thank you for answering those. And then also, I wanted to thank all the speakers tonight. I appreciate hearing everyone's perspective about equity. And I also really want to applaud the student who circulated a petition with, you know, that's pretty good stuff. So, it's always a pleasure seeing students get awards, but also having students advocate for their own education. That's always a treat, so.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I would like to commend James Blair and their, the initiative that, that we learned about this, this evening. What, what has really struck me the last, this past year or so is a number of the schools have really been working very hard developing guidance, programs developed by the guidance counselors at the elementary level and also the middle school level and, and even the high school level as well. And, and I have seen several of those in practice. And what I really earnestly hope is this, if, if that effort continues and the energy that those folks put into that, I am convinced that it will have a positive impact on academic achievement. But even, probably I would even say even more importantly, it will help in developing more positive self-concepts in our students, which may in fact lead to a reduction of short and long-term suspensions as our students go through the system.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
I have nothing really to add to the rest of, of my colleagues have, have mentioned this evening. I would just like to say that the Virginia School Board Association is, conferences in town this week and several of them, I'm sure, are in their hotels watching us right now to understand how you should hold a school board meeting.
Yeah, I bet you forgot about that.
So, just want to welcome them all to town and enjoy their stay.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Hummel?
Yes, I, I don't want to waste everyone's time to thank everybody that's already been thanked, but thank everyone to, that spoke tonight and came out. And then all the, the Lafayette people, the theater people and the Jamestown Golf guys and girls. It's just wonderful to see their devotion to what they are passionate about. And on November fourteenth last week, I had the pleasure of doing the Take Your Legislator to School Day, and we chose Berkeley Middle School. And Ms. Mrs. Cook and Mrs. Young accompanied me with Mike Mullins and his assistant, Georgia. And we had a wonderful visit to that, to Berkeley with Principal Cigarettis, Selena Shambly, Ms. Erickson in the media center, and Mr. Cosby, who demonstrated the wonderful Maker Space that they have at Berkeley Middle School. Wonderful, wonderful opportunity for all the kids to use this technology that we could only dream of just a few years ago. So, thanks for that. And yes, we're going, all of us are looking forward to a exciting next couple of days at the VSBA in meetings.
All of us.
All of us, yes. So, that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Just wanted to share a couple of things. I too wanted to thank the Jamestown student who came out and spoke and wanted to share that through the Student Advisory Committee, that was an item that they brought up. And so, through the Advisory Committee, students across the three high schools have an opportunity to share their concerns. One was equity and funding athletics, but they brought that up and, and staff did take note of that. And so, I'm sure that that will be addressed. And then, again, wanted to thank our speakers for coming tonight. And I, I, I think I can speak for my colleagues with regard to equity. I, I think all of us are fully aware of the achievement gap. And I think we've been very transparent with that, and the division is aware that we need to make strides. As a matter of fact, just this weekend, I mentioned last week, the Movement Day. So, Ms., Dr. Highland and I attended the first Movement Day, which was an opportunity for several churches to come together and kind of look at equity issues across the broader community, and we shared demographics and information. And, and I brought that up. When you look at our total scores, they, we outpaced the state. But when you begin to peel that back and look at our subgroups, we are fully aware that there is room for improvement, and we're moving in that direction. Today was fun, was able to be at Matoka with Dr. Heron and other leadership to celebrate our teachers, staff, and administrators. And so, as a school board member, that's, those are the fun, those are fun, just when we get to celebrate. And so, I'm grateful that I was able to, to go to Matoka today. Yesterday, was able to take our newly-elected delegate, Batten, to James Blair Middle School. And so, she too and I got to see the Maker Space at Blair, and she got to learn firsthand. She got to speak with Ms. Haskins about the ELL program. And so, it is, I think it's critically important for us to share with our elected officials the challenges and opportunities that our buildings face each day, recognizing that each of our sixteen buildings are slightly different. And so, what that looks like is important to share. And with regard to one of the speakers tonight from the village with information about the IB program, I know that we have studied that and decisions are forthcoming. And so, I don't think there is a total lack of data with regard to what we know about student academic outcomes. We have, we have studied that. And wanted to let the broader community know, it's, it's winter. And so, if you want to attend a really great concert, all of our high schools and middle schools will have winter band, orchestra, and choral concerts. And so, you can contact your local schools or our board clerk and can give you dates and times of those concerts. And so, that's always a great way to kick off the holiday season. So, with that, the next item is our Policy Committee. Upcoming event is meeting on December twelfth at eight AM, is that correct, in room three oh nine? Followed by upcoming meetings on December third. As Ms. Cook spoke to earlier, is our joint meeting with our funding partners, nine AM at Legacy Hall. We'll have a closed session on December tenth at six PM in the Annex, followed by a work session and action items also on the tenth at six thirty in room three hundred. We'll have a budget work session on January seventh between four and six PM in the Annex. We'll have a closed session followed by that at six PM in room three oh nine. Our organizational meeting, where we will determine board leadership and, and onboard our, a new colleague, Mr. Greg Dowell, is followed by that at six thirty in room three hundred. And so, there, unless there's additional comments, this meeting is adjourned.